We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no public input signed up tonight, so we'll move straight down to council comments. Councilor Maranas, would you like to start?
Uh, no comment, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go back to the meeting from last town council meeting. We do things that need to be done for the people. I just wish that the public would be more interested in coming to our meetings and finding out what's going on. We do things that we think is doing good for the people. It's hard to think for 9,000 people. Another thing is that we don't always like some of the activities that go on. Some people like the Blue Festival, I like it. Some people don't like it. Let's support everything that other people do, other entities do. It gives us GRTs. If we get GRTs, we don't have to raise anything up. We don't have to raise taxes up. We don't have to raise water sewers up. Even though it might be one day, or two days, or a weekend, support them. Thank you.
Councilor Polly.
It's been hot out, we all know that. That's about all I have to say. Not much tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of attending the wastewater treatment party christening this morning, along with the mayor was there and a number of other people. And I want to thank everyone in the town, P&amp;M, Affordable Solar, and I cannot say that whole. Mayor's Climate Committee, I was just gonna say Mayor's Climate Committee, rather than the whole long name. The Office of Sustainability, NICS CO, just everyone that had a part in this. And certainly, I want to thank our counselor, Robert Scavron, and our manager, Alex Brown, for the part they played in making sure that the power purchase agreement was successful and it's served as a model for the state. So, I'm really pleased to see that we're working and thankful that the mayor did not get electrocuted in some bizarre way this morning when he flipped the switch. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And I have no comments. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved, and we'll move to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, June 11, 2013, as presented to you tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11, 2013, as presented this evening.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, June 11, 2013. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion, a second, and no further discussion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is under Reports, and we'll do a presentation by Heidi Sexton about the mission and policies of the High Desert Humane Society.
It's on now?
It's on now.
I'm Heidi Sexton, President of the High Desert Humane Society, and thank you for letting me come back and address a couple of questions that had come up when we were discussing some of the ordinance changes. I'm gonna just kinda run through some information here, and if at any time you have any questions, stop me and we'll take a look at it. One of the things I wanted to sort of address is the difference between the function of the humane society and the function of the animal shelter. Cause I know it's kind of splitting hairs, but it's important hairs. The humane society in itself is a privately owned, New Mexico nonprofit corporation with 501(c)(3) charitable tax status. And our mission, which I think is really important, is to promote and to provide humane and ethical treatment of companion animals through shelter care, adoption, community education programs which address pet overpopulation. So, some of the ways the humane society does this and carries out their mission is we have our HALP program, which is a spay and neuter assistance program. Our Paz Cause thrift store downtown, all of the net profits go to our HALP program. And we've been lucky enough to be able to put anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 a year back into the community in the form of spay and neuter assistance. The society also holds reduced fee vaccination clinics. We also run an emergency response plan in the event that there's pets that need to be evacuated in a community emergency. We operate a pet crematorium in a memorial garden. We provide community education programs, and we also do pet adoptions. One of the other large functions of the society is we operate an animal shelter. Some people refer to it as the pound, and we operate that for the town of Silver City and Grant County. So, the animal shelter in the pound, if you wanna refer to it as the pound, or impoundment, I guess, it is run in accordance with the city and county ordinances and within our agreements or contracts. So, there's the possibility that the humane society's policies and procedures could differ a little bit from the function of the shelter itself. And I think this is a really important difference to understand, and partially because the humane society is almost primarily funded by private donations. The shelter part of it is what the city and county pay for. That's where the money goes as part of our agreement. So, just to sort of clarify or explain how that kinda works. When an animal, a stray animal or an impounded animal comes in, it goes into the shelter. And it's held in the shelter within the accordance of the ordinances. I think something really important to understand is these animals that are coming in are not the property of the shelter, they are not the property of the society, and they are not the property of the city. They still belong to whoever the owner is. And that's why it's important to have the ordinances and those rules set up, because that animal will be housed in accordance with the ordinance. It's still the property of the owner. So, if the owner was responsible and the pet has tags, the animal is kept there for four days, and if it didn't, it's kept there for three days. And at the end of that period, that gives the owner time to come claim the animal. And at the end of that period, if the owner doesn't claim that animal, the ownership of that animal can now be transferred to the shelter. And that was one of the concerns we had in the last ordinance. The sooner we can get that animal that's not been claimed transferred to the ownership of the shelter, now decisions can be made. In claiming that pet, it can, there can be fees associated with claiming that pet. There could be impoundment fees, and as part of the last ordinance change, that goes up with each impoundment. If the animal did not have current rabies vaccinations or licensing, they have to pay for that in order to get the animal out. There could also be a fine associated with it. There could also be late fees if they didn't get the vaccinations in a timely fashion. There could also be board if they were notified on the first day the animal came in and they chose not to come pick it up until day four, they could be charged board for it. And the animal control officer may have citations that get tagged onto that. In addition, if the animal's not spayed or neutered, they would be required to pay a spay and neuter deposit to get the animal out. And that spay and neuter deposit is also a state requirement, and if they do get the animal spayed and neutered within 30 days, that deposit is completely refundable to them. So, that's the function of the shelter. Now, if the animal is not claimed, or if the owner says, "I don't wanna pay those fees", or "I don't want the animal anymore," now the ownership can be transferred to the shelter, and if that's an adoptable animal, the ownership of the animal can be transferred to the society, and the society runs an adoption program. So, the animal can be put up for adoption. And one of the questions raised, and this is what I call "we have a deal for you." When an animal's been impounded several times, and there may be fees, and maybe they didn't get the shots, and they still haven't gotten spayed and neutered, and they're looking at quite a high price to bail their dog back out, if they will turn the ownership of that animal over to the shelter, the shelter can transfer it to the society, the society can put it up for adoption, and our adoption fees are far less than what sometimes the impoundment fees and the fines are. So, that's the deal. You can, you could get your own dog back, and that way we have control of the animal, the society has control. Now, it's gonna have its licensing, all its vaccinations, including the ones that are not necessarily required by law, and it will be spayed and neutered before it leaves. So, that puts a little more control on the animal. One of the other things that I think's important to understand is, as part of the contract and the agreement that the, with the shelter, the shelter also does things like, they purchase all the licenses, and they manage the sale of all those licenses, they distribute them to the veterinarians, they track all the numbers. When the veterinarians sell them, or the shelter sells them, all those numbers go into a database so that we can track the owner of the animal. And that's all the record keeping that we do as part of the agreement with the city. We also, as part of the agreement, are prepared to hold animals on court holds. If there's been a question raised in that the animal cannot be left with the owner, and there's a court pending, or a trial pending on the ownership of the animal, we will hold the animal. In fact, we currently have one that's been there in July, it'll have been there a year, that we've been boarding it on a court hold. So, that's all part of the agreement also. We also do, when an animal has bitten somebody, and they don't have current rabies vaccinations, it's required by law that we quarantine that animal for a 10-day observation if the owner wants the animal back. And we do all of that as part of the shelter function in accordance with the ordinances and our contract. So, some of the functions of the society are a little bit different, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but our ordinance is more of a public nuisance and public safety concern, where the society is a little more of the humane and ethical treatment of the animal. So, the combination of the two, I think, blend well together. Does anybody have any questions at that point? Does that help sort of explain, I know some of the questions that were raised about, you know, what really happens to the animal? The other thing I do wanna point out is, once the animal's transferred to the ownership of the society, we have animals that we've kept there for months, six, eight months. If the animal remains adoptable, and remains healthy, and remains mentally sound, we will house them for as long as we possibly can in an effort to find a home for them. That's our primary purpose, is to find good, responsible owners for all of the pets that are adoptable. That's our biggest goal, so. I did just wanna throw in, if nobody has any questions, I just, I wanted to throw in that this year is the humane society's 40th birthday, and we will be having a birthday party at Golf Park on October 5th, 10 to 2, music, hot dogs, soda. They're gonna let me know if you have permission to bring your dog, which I don't think will be a problem, but it'll just be a birthday celebration. We may have a silent auction and just commemorate the fact that we've helped and cared for companion animals in the community for 40 years.
I think you did very well at explaining the details and the separations.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber Quarterly Report by Sissy McAndrew, Executive Director.
I just wanna mention that people should adopt locally, but be careful what you say to Heidi, because she called me up one day and told me I needed to come out immediately, and I got out there and she had the dog of my dreams there. And so, they do a great job out there, all my animals are from the shelter. I just wanted to give you a quick update. Of course, we haven't finished the year yet, but we have some wonderful statistics. My goal has always been at least to have 15,000 visitors a year, and to date, we've had 15,883 for this budget year. We're averaging about 40, well, 48.96 this month, and that's 10 more per day than we were averaging last year. Of course, last year we had the fires up in reserve. And concerning the fires, I just really wanna let you know, we're working very, very closely with the Hila National Forest. We have one of the tent signs inside the visitor's center, they're coming in and changing that information every day. They're updating our hosts with information, and it's really been wonderful. We've also been dealing with social media, getting the word out that Silver City is open for business, that the fire is 30 miles away, we have 30 miles visibility, and that the inner loop, the Trail to Mountain Spirit Scenic Byway is open. So, we're working very closely with the cliff dwellings and able to keep tourism up. And we're hearing responses from people as well, saying, "Glad to hear that, we're thinking on coming up in a couple of weeks, we'll keep watching to be sure what the situation is." So, we do wanna thank the Hila National Forest for all they're doing. We've also had some great response as far as the ads that have been going out. We've had, through the reader response, 5,525 mailings will have gone out this year. We also have custom mailings, we're still finishing some of those up, so I'll come back and let you know exactly how that's going. Those are what we would often consider relocation packets. Real estate is up. We really feel that things have shifted from a buyer's market to a seller's market, and if you talk to a realtor, I think just about everyone's gonna tell you they're happy with the way things are. The Silver City Museum's visitation is up 30%. We're gonna check back with the University Museum, but we really appreciate, they've brought down some bookmarks for us, which it's really helpful to put something in somebody's hand. Of course, the Silver City Life Magazine is featuring the Nan exhibit, and people are coming up specifically to come see that exhibit. We're getting a lot of folks, especially from El Paso and Las Cruces, coming up to see that specific exhibit. So, we're hoping to see their numbers go up. And the businesses downtown are all telling us that they're feeling like we're no longer, it's not a bleep, they really feel that we're having a trend and things are returning. The restaurants are doing very, very well, and of course, when we talk about cultural tourism, the quality in specific foods that our restaurants are serving are getting notoriety, and people are coming specifically to come to the different restaurants. We're also finding that people are coming for some of the specific shops, and the galleries are starting to see once again that folks are coming in and interested in art. We're looking forward to the Clay Festival, we're looking forward to the Red Dot Tour, we're looking forward to the, all of the festivals that are coming up this fall. And we're looking at ways of expanding the Western Heritage. We continue to have folks coming in, we have folks in Germany right now, quite a continuum of folks coming in because of Billy the Kid. And so, we're gonna work very strongly with Fort Beard and with the Mining District to continue to increase tourism there. We wanna thank the council, the mayor, the staff, we're really pleased with the lodgers' tax appropriation for this upcoming year. We receive the fulfillment side of that, so that helps us send out the mailings, and also to provide some of the operational needs of the visitor's center. And we also are working very closely, as you know, with the County Tourism Committee, and we'll receive funding again, hopefully, from the county, and that again goes directly to our bulk mailings. We're always looking for volunteers, so general public, please come on down, help share your community with others, it's very rewarding, and we appreciate those people that have been calling us up lately and scheduling to get trained. And let you know also with those lodgers' tax funds, we will be updating the map pads this year. Those hadn't been updated for about 15 years, and so, we're gonna get all the new streets on there. We're actually extending it out, so the first phase of Wind Canyon will be there, and extending out into the Arenas Valley area, so that's gonna help us more in helping direct people. And then, of course, for the in-depth part of downtown, we have the new Main Street Downtown Guides, and so, things are going very, very smoothly. Once again, we hope you're pleased with the work that we're doing. It is the passion of everybody that's down there, and we're having a great time. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Next is staff reports, Mr. Brown. Chief? Anything from the legal office?
No.
Anything from the clerk's office? All right. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, approval, disapproval of ordinance number 1221. A request for a map amendment zone change, ZC 13-02, from a residential A zone to a residential C zone for a tract of land which is currently known as Shady Grove, Mobile Home, and RV Park, and addressed as 1605 Canal Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The property encompasses blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the ward's re-subdivision of the Plata Vista addition to the town of Silver City. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had expertise discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communication from any party to this case?
None.
Hearing none, all members are qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Could you please print your name and address? Sir, would you please print your name and address? Will please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Peter Russell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give
That the testimony I am about to give.
In the matter before this council
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth.
The whole truth.
The truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth. Under penalty of protection.
Under penalty of protection.
Thank you. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the director, by P&amp;Z Commission, or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief, and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" And then the council will make a decision.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. There is one note in the legal description that I'd like to make. Paragraph 2, the property encompasses blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4, less and except lots 1 and 3 of block 2. That will need to be in your motion as stated in the ordinance. Somehow, we had a miscommunication, and it was, the less and except wasn't listed in the legal notice. So, you'll notice on your ordinance, paragraph 2, that it is stated less and except lots 1 and 3 of block 2. This is Zone Change 1302. It's already been to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It involves, this area right here, you'll see as the less and accepts. They did not purchase this part of the property. The residential district which the park is in right now does not allow mobile home parks. The new owners of the property would like to restore it to a mobile home and RV park, and the homes have been there, some of them since the 60s. The park has been established since the 1960s. This is a photo, in case any of you aren't familiar with the area. It's along Canal Street facing south. This is the corner of Gold and 16th Street. You can see where some of the homes are located. It's kinda, it's a large park, it encompasses several blocks. The amendments to the official zoning map require that the Planning and Zoning Commission make a recommendation to the town council, and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall make at least one of the following findings. Would you like me to read them into the record?
I'm quite familiar with them.
Okay. Is anybody else not familiar with them? Okay. I have listed them here, and the Planning and Zoning Commission makes the recommendation under Findings 1, 2, 4, and 7, that the zone change be approved by the council. Would anyone like to see the map again, or have any questions about the individual property?
Nope.
Any other questions for me?
Any other questions for this staff report? Thank you. Next will come witnesses, or next comes the applicant's case.
Hello? I've got a little bit of a chest cold, so if I squeak or something, I'm not going through puberty, it's just chest cold coming up.
Just try to speak into the microphone.
Okay.
See if it'll pick you up.
My name is Tom Peterson, and I'm operations manager for the park. And we purchased the park about a year ago, and been working diligently to make a character change in the park. We've moved out some of the bad folks, and we've done a lot of remodels and upgrades to the property, and continue to do that today.
Tell us why you want the zone change.
We need the zone change to stay in compliance with the law, first off, because it's a residential A, and it's a mobile home park. And RVs have been there, and it's been a mobile home park, an RV park, for, you know, a few decades. So, we just wanna come back into compliance. Also, we plan on redoing the bottom block closest to the canal, and upgrade that. Also, we plan on redoing the bottom block closest to the canal, and upgrade that, and make it the RV section of the park. I'm sorry. Make it the RV section of the park. And what should mean, new outbuildings, and, and new structures, and recreating the ground down there. And in order to do that, we have to be within the city's compliance.
Anything else?
Um, I can't think of anything, but if you have any questions, I'm probably not the best speaker for this, but...
You're doing fine, Tom. Any questions for the applicant? Next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. Ruth Ann, you want to say anything? Okay. There being none, are there any witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case? Seeing none, come on back up, Tom. Does that conclude your case in chief? Or is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
Well, whatever happens here today, we'll continue to upgrade the park, and we're landscaping and picking better people. We had some, we had some neighbors in last meeting with P&amp;Z, and at least one, and they were very impressed with what's been happening, the change of character within the park and the area. You know, kids are playing in the streets again, or not literally in the streets, but you know, they're out there beyond their yard gates and everything. And it's just a lot safer down there, and we really think this would help us make those other changes, which will even make it better in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness? Seeing none, is the hearing board prepared to consider the application and render its decision? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move for approval of ordinance number one two two one, a request for a map amendment zone change, ZC thirteen dash zero two, from a residential A zone to a residential C zone for a tract of land which is currently known as Shady Grove's Mobile Home and RV Park, and addressed at sixteen zero five Canal Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The property encompasses blocks one, two, three, and four, less than except lots one and three of block two of the Plata Vista addition to the town of Silver City. With the findings, or the finding number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twelve twenty one. Is there any discussion? There is a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twelve twenty one, as per the hearing we just had. Roll call.
Counselor Morales?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Bass?
Aye.
Motion carries. There you go. And that concludes this hearing. The next item on the agenda is approval disproval of resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty four. A resolution to support the Southwest New Mexico Energy and Green Jobs Task Force's Regional Strategic Plan for Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy, also known as EERE, and Associated Job Creation. Mary, did you want to talk on it?
Um, hello, thank you, Mayor, councilors. I won't spend a whole lot of time talking on it, but I would like to say that this plan and the resolution before you is something that's being looked at by all four of our southwest counties, and all of the towns, villages, cities, whatever all the municipalities are called within the counties. It's something that's been worked on for the past three years, began with a four-county Energy and Green Jobs Task Force that was facilitated through Senator Bingaman's office, and the town of Silver City has participated in that work, including the work of what became a small work group with representation from the counties and municipalities and just general community. And it was that small work group that came up with the plan that you have before you today, and the resolution that we hope you will approve, so that the region can move forward with the, with the plan. I think it ties in beautifully with some of the planning that's been going on with the town of Silver City around everything from built environment to sustainability, to certainly our current climate action plan, and some of the work of our Office of Sustainability. And I'm open for questions, if any of you have something for me.
Thank you. And as the sponsor, I get to say a few things first. The, what I was really impressed with in the plan was the SWOT analysis, and the honesty that was, was in the analysis, with the strengths and weaknesses, and opportunities and threats. I think it was very comprehensive, and we didn't, we didn't try to make things look better than the reality tells us they are, as well as pointing out the strengths that we do offer. And that truly gives us a plan that we can take and grow from and make productive. So, thank you. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, any questions, comments from the council? Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, you know, it's really wonderful to see this come to fruition. I attended the first couple of meetings, and it's, it really is, it's, this is an incredible plan that's been put together, and it's, it is, like the mayor said, good to see the SWOT analysis in there. I remember participating in the first set that was done, and I know it's probably been redone, but honesty is refreshing.
It actually wasn't redone, because that's the original...
Oh, really? That first one?
We might have had to shorten it a little bit, but that's the original.
I noticed some things, but it looked like there were a few things added, but it's refreshing that it's still that, that way, and, and, and I think that today's wastewater treatment plant solar array, pristine really kind of fits right into this overall vision that we have for what we're doing, so. The mayor's and folks in the town of Silver City really had the foresight to see this before this, Senator Bingaman even came forward with this group, so it's quite wonderful. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move to approve a resolution, I'm sorry, resolution number twenty thirteen dash twenty four, a resolution to support the Southwest New Mexico Energy and Green Jobs Task Force's Regional Strategic Plan for Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy, EERE, and Associated Job Creation.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution two thousand thirteen dash twenty four. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve resolution two thousand thirteen dash twenty four, a resolution to support the Southwest New Mexico Energy and Green Jobs Task Force's Regional Strategic Plan for Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy, also known as EERE, and Associated Job Creation. Roll call, please.
Counselor Edison?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval disproval of resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty five, a resolution supporting a public-private economic development Main Street project. Anybody from Main Street want to speak? Lucy?
Hello, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm president of the Board for the Silver City Main Street Project. And I just want to mention a few things about this agreement. It's a continuation of a current agreement, and would replace the old one, and it kind of outlines our responsibilities for Silver City Main Street to participate in economic development functions for the district, for the historic district and the Main Street District, and also the partnership that we have with New Mexico Main Street, and the resources that they bring to our organization locally, and the support of the town for the economic development projects.
Just, this is also a repeat. I think we do it every three years.
Two.
Two years. The only comment that I had, or concern that I had, was that the footer on every page says that it's July one, two thousand thirteen, through July thirty one, two thousand and fifteen. Shouldn't that be June thirty one?
I think they put the overlap in there just so that in case the next resolution wasn't passed in time, do you see, so that it wouldn't expire?
So they're planning two years ahead for us to screw up?
No. I think that this is a state-wide program. I don't think they're picking on us.
Okay.
Probably based on experience.
Just to go over a few of the expectations, how are you doing with recruiting?
Um, we selected a candidate, we've selected a candidate for our Main Street manager position, and he will be starting on July first.
And your financials are in order?
Yes, they are. We've gone through and adopted our budget for the next fiscal year, and reviewed our financials for this last year, and at our meeting this month, we did adopt our upcoming budget.
And you're aware that by the town accepting this, that it exposes the Main Street program to the Inspection of Public Records Act?
I, um, had been notified of that, yes.
Any other comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, any comments from the counsel? Counselor Morales?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of brief comments. Of course, we, we know that the Silver City Main Street project has been around since nineteen eighty-five, and has, through mandates placed upon it by the state, has been in public-private partnerships with the town for that period of time, between twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. Pretty good history to establish whether we want to continue that. I know in eighty-five, the vacancy rates were pushing forty percent at that time. In the last decade, we've probably been hovering around the fifteen percent vacancy rate, sometimes a little bit more than fifteen percent, sometimes a little bit less. So there's been some positive returns already from this partnership in that regard. I know the, the town has probably, over that period of time, invested at least half a million dollars in this project, substantial amount of money. In return for that, I'll just talk about some of the most visible things. The Silver City Main Street has brought us, spearheaded and brought us the visitor center, the Big Ditch Park, new sidewalks on Bullard, new streetlights on Bullard, a, a great parking area on, in North Bullard, which we hadn't had, and greatly needed, so, you know, I'm not even placing value on all those items. We know it's substantive. We can, we can all speculate that there is a return on that investment, whether it's a, even if we say we got dollar for dollar, and we only value all of that, that I just mentioned, at five hundred thousand, I think they've done okay by, by the town, and I support this resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Morales?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number twenty thirteen dash twenty five, a resolution supporting a public-private economic development Main Street project.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution two thousand thirteen twenty five. Is there any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second, no further discussion, to approve resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty five, a resolution supporting a public-private economic development Main Street project. Roll call, please.
Counselor Morales?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Bass?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval disproval of resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty-three, an amendment to the Town of Silver City's Employees' Personnel Manual. And I'll, I'll talk first, and I'm going to let Alex fill in the gaps, since I think my name's on it, or it should have been. Was, most of our, our union contracts that cover, yeah, that's really high pitched.
Yeah.
That's better. The, the union contracts cover all of the pay that is, that is afforded within the contracts, including longevity pay. However, the personnel manual has not included longevity pay for those that are not covered under union contracts. And what this does is bring the personnel manual as it pertains to longevity pay in closer comparison to the, the contracts that we've previously awarded. Mr. Brown?
Now it's like a bird.
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, any discussion, comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Um, I'm pleased to see this on the council pocket, that we're going to be able to do this for non-union employees, and, um, I'm very supportive of this resolution.
Any other discussion? Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, you know, being reared in this town, that I've, I've seen a lot of union influence, both in my friends and family, and one thing I've known about most union people is, they want to see the betterment of all workers, and I can just see that they would be pleased with us bringing everybody in line with where they're at.
Any other discussion? Real quick, I think it's important to point out that the cost of, of replacing employees can be very, very dramatic on an organization, and we truly have to value our long-term employees, and the experience and efficiency that they bring to their positions, and that's why I supported this, and, and worked with Alex to make sure that got on the agenda. And if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move to approve resolution number twenty thirteen dash twenty-three, an amendment to the Town of Silver City Employees' Personnel Manual.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
Um, I'd just like to comment that I agree with you that the cost of replacing an employee with the experience and a great deal of training that the town, and assistance the town may have paid for, you know, can be quite exorbitant, so this truly is, as I said before, I'm pleased to see this, and it does level up the playing field, because I know that, as Counselor Rose said, that, I know that many union employees like to make sure that everyone gets, you know, the same, what they fight for, they want to make sure every employee gets, so this is a, it's a very good way to ensure that, of course, so, thank you.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty-three, amendment to the Town of Silver City Employee... the Town of Silver City Employees' Personnel Manual. Roll call, please.
Council Bass?
Aye.
Council Cook?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Murray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify this thing. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.